City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1388. Today is January 18th, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. Let us start by standing and saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone here. Let us start by the clerk calling the roll.
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Everyone is present. We're going to move on to item number two, adoption of minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Does anyone need to make any changes or adjustments? Okay, moving on to item number three, presentations. And we are going to start with, uh, the first presentation is going to be a proclamation to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Psi Omega Chapter. So you can, if you come up, I'll meet you down there. Okay, on behalf of the City of Forest Park, this is a proclamation. I'm going to have to read this in full, so please bear with me. So, uh, whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Psi Omega Chapter celebrated their twentieth chapter anniversary on January 5th, 2022, and whereas the Phi Psi Omega Chapter has played an integral part in serving the community of Forest Park by providing scholarships to area high school students, establishing the Emerging Youth Leaders Program, supporting minority-owned businesses, and supporting local senior citizens. And whereas in 2015, Phi Psi Omega Chapter along with the Forest Park Environmental Awareness Program Manager developed the Paper Shredding Program. And whereas the Paper Shredding Program has continued since 2015 with the exception of 2020 due to the pandemic. And whereas thus far, uh, 1,177 cars have participated and 41 tons of paper have been shredded and recycled. And whereas Phi Psi Omega Chapter provides funding to help pay for the cost of the program, the volunteers who tabulate participation data and remove paper from cars, and the volunteers who provide the much appreciated energy and enthusiasm that makes this program such a success. And whereas the City of Forest Park greatly appreciates Phi Psi Omega Chapter's assistance in developing this beneficial community program, now therefore I, Mayor Aaron Brown, do hereby proclaim January 18th, 2022 as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Psi Omega Chapter Day.
To the Honorable Mayor Aaron Brown, distinguished members of Forest Park City Council, residents of the City of Forest Park community and guests, I am Carolyn Patton. I am the President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Psi Omega Chapter of Forest Park, Ohio. I bring greetings on behalf of our chapter and our 20 Culture Pearls Foundation. We are thrilled to be here this evening to accept the proclamation from the City of Forest Park. Over 20 years, our chapter has pled to support the community of Forest Park and the northern suburbs of communities of Cincinnati through our programs of service. We continue to honor that commitment today. We have a commitment of service to all mankind. Our program targets include HBCU for Life, Women's Health, Building Your Economic Legacy, The Arts, Global Impact. We are pleased to be of service to this community for over 20 years. Our Shredding Event is always a huge success, and we thank you for our partnership. Our International Sorority celebrated 114 years of service on January 15th this year. It began with humble beginnings with African-American women just one generation removed from slavery. Now we have chapters internationally and all over the world. We boast over 300,000 members. Our chapter, Phi Psi Omega, is one part of the sorority making that impact here in the Great Lakes region and locally in this area. We thank you for your continued support over the years, and we look forward to a continued partnership in the future. Thank you and good evening.
Before you leave, I just want to say a big thank you all for your service at Forest Park, and I look forward to every year, the shredding. I'm probably one of the first people who will come. I really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to our second presentation, uh, we are going to announce the Holiday Decoration Contest Awards.
So my name is Travina Adams. I'm councilwoman. Ma'am, I'll go up there.
Yeah, you can go up there.
Good evening. As Councilwoman Adams, I am extremely excited to be announcing our Beautification Commission, um, awards for the City of Forest Park for holiday spirit. The first is going to be for a Kaden Elam. Here you are, Kaden. You came out. I'm so happy you came out. I just want to tell you, one, I appreciate you coming and receiving your award personally. Two, I think it's a big deal when you take the time to decorate your home and your area and just make it festive. I just want to tell you thank you because it makes Forest Park beautiful.
It is something I enjoy doing.
I'm glad you did it. Continue to do it, please, and thank you so very much. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, here, ma'am. Next, we have an award, um, for Teresa Davis. And Ms. Davis is not here with us, but if you're watching, Ms. Davis, we just want to say thank you so much for taking the time to beautify the community. And our last award is for Mary H. Sims. Ms. Sims, we appreciate you. We thank you. We have your award. You can pick it up from our office. We appreciate you so much, and God bless you all.
And that concludes our Holiday Decoration Contest Awards. Moving on to, uh, number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Uh, when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Uh, council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. Uh, okay, so it looks like we don't have anyone, so we're going to move on to the next item, um, item number five, reports from council members, starting with Councilmember Adams.
Um, yeah, I would like to know if I can put on the agenda to discuss, um, the acknowledgement of a few of our young, um, employees at Kroger. Uh, there are a couple of employees there who make the shopping experience very pleasurable, and I just want to know if we can acknowledge these young adults, um, students of Whittenwood's High School. And I believe one does go to UC, but the opportunity to acknowledge them as being, um, positive members, influential members, trend-setting members of Forest Park who are young and who are residents, um, in an effort to, uh, shed some light and some positivity on the Kroger itself and the community.
Okay, so you would like to add an acknowledgement of young employees at Kroger's to add to the next work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and do that. Uh, next report, um, is going to be from Councilmember Clark.
I don't have a report at this time, but the, um, like last year with the, um, Black Business Spotlight, that opens up tomorrow, and so, um, businesses can be voted on through, um, throughout the public. It'll be, um, available via, um, um, it'll be electronically available to vote, and then we'll award those, that, um, business in the month of February.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Clark. Um, next is Councilmember Harrison.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Uh, next will be Councilmember, First Vice Mayor Holt.
I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody, and that I pray that, um, 2022 is much better than 20 and 21, and we're not out of the woods. So please be safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, and stay socially distanced as much as you can, and so we can all get out of, get out of this horrible thing that's going on. With that, Happy New Year. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, moving on to Second Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time. I would like to wish our residents a Happy New Year.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, thank you. That concludes, uh, Agenda Item Number Five, Reports From Council Members. Moving on to Agenda Number Six, uh, the Mayor's Report, that is my report. I do not have anything, um, to add to the next work session at this time. I do want to reiterate, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt's words that, um, we are still in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, the city does require that if you come to the municipal building for any reason, you do have to still wear a mask, and we would encourage people to consider getting vaccinated. Um, and I also, I do want to say Happy New Year because this is our first session of the new year, so, uh, and that will conclude my report. Moving on to Item Number Seven, City Manager's Report.
I'll keep mine, uh, very, very, it's a saying totally today. One of the things that we're working on will be coming up over the next, uh, month or so internally from a staff standpoint as we are beginning our, uh, projects for, for street repairs throughout the year. And, uh, one of the first things we do is we do what's called a pavement condition rating report. So we'll be out, you may see some of our folks out, and we'll be driving the streets, and they'll be looking at the, at the pavement and, uh, coming up with, um, uh, ratings which will evaluate the streets from good to bad to not so good or not so bad, uh, all the way, all the way from, you know, on a 10-point margin. So anyway, that will determine, uh, which streets we, we fix. Those will be the high priority streets, the ones that need it the most, and that's how we, we normally do that. But, uh, we're looking at doing a, um, pretty good project this year. We'll, we'll be rolling that out here shortly with more information on that. Um, I want to thank everyone for, um, putting up with me this, this evening with my voice, but, uh, I want to remind everyone we'd be remiss that, uh, uh, last weekend was Martin Luther King Day, and, um, we hope that, uh, there's a lot more work still to be done, and we hope that, uh, that, uh, we can carry that on here with us over the next several years.
Um, Mr. Jones, I have one quick question. Do we still have COVID, uh, rapid tests available at the fire center, at the fire department?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not for the, not for the general public. We have, we still have them for our employees. Um, we, uh, we should be getting a new, a new stash, which we, which we, I mean, if you, if you need one, obviously, uh, with the, uh, today I, I noticed, in fact, I actually went out and did it, uh, the post office has a link, and we'll find that link.
COVIDtest.org?
We'll do that. They'll send every address, I believe, for tests.
Yeah.
So make sure we're, I'll find that link, and we'll put it on our website, but everyone should go out and, and get themselves four. And, uh, a lot of your healthcare providers, for instance, here at the city, our, our Anthem, uh, will also provide it. You can order them through your healthcare provider. Uh, most, I think all of the healthcare providers are doing this, where they'll send you, um, you can order, in our case, I think it's, uh, uh, six, because they, they come in packs of two. Um, I think you can get six. So, um, look at your, you know, go to your healthcare provider and look out and see if you have them, and, and obviously, they're going to become more readily available as it, as, as the year goes on because, um, of the shortage recently with the, with the outbreaks, and everyone, everyone's been using them. I've used two in the last three weeks, one yesterday. I wouldn't be here. Both negative, but, um, uh, and everybody's, you know, you just want to make sure that you're protecting yourself and protecting the people around you and not infecting folks by accident, because you just don't know. And a lot of, most folks are asymptomatic, so, um, you know, be careful. Um, we're still in that very dangerous stage where they, they expect this, this variant to, to go on for another week or two, at least maybe through February in terms of the spikes. So, uh, be careful. Um, if you absolutely positively need one, we may have another shipment come in, so if you really need one, again, you can call our, call here, we'll, we'll see if we've got one available. If we do, obviously, we give them out, but, um, we gave out, um, so many over the last month or so that, uh, we're really running out, just like everyone else.
And the one from the post office that you're sending out, you can, I, I actually ordered mine today. They were sending you four?
Yes. For address.
What's the name of the website?
I'll give you the website.
Okay.
I have it.
I'll place it on our website, uh, tomorrow, and, uh, that way, if, if anybody needs it, it'll be available.
Okay, good.
No, and Dana should probably have it at the bottom of the screen right now.
Yeah, man, yeah, probably. Okay, moving on to...
I apologize, it was COVIDtest.gov, I'm sorry.
COVIDtest.gov?
Yes, instead of org, I apologize.
COVIDtest.gov, okay. All right, and that is the City Manager's Report. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Other Reports, starting with our Law Director, Mr. Uh, John Wykoff.
Is it here?
It's, it's...
It says Wendell Burns.
Yes, it says Wendell Burns.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I'm currently working with the county engineer regarding, uh, an annexation that was started in 2007, and unfortunately, the engineer's office didn't properly file it, so we're trying to get it all straightened out. I consulted with the police department about a Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court decision regarding, uh, confiscation of weapons and domestic violence or suicide contemplation issues. Um, I went through and reviewed a number of public records requests that we've received lately, and Sally, I still don't think the police department is sharing with you. I've even asked them to, so I got two from that department again, so I think we need to follow up on that, uh, if you wouldn't mind, make sure they get those to you. Um, also, we're working on, uh, the possible dedication of a small strip of pavement in the Chase Plaza, trying to get that straightened out. And then I also filed and received orders for the city's, uh, police department to keep an, uh, inventory locker of confiscated everything from cigarette butts to drugs to guns to ammunition. And we have to file two different petitions that were approved. One is for disposal of unclaimed property, uh, and then the other is for disposal of drugs. Uh, weapons, ammunition are destroyed, they are not put back on the street, and the drugs are also destroyed under the supervision of the DEA. Uh, that would be the end of my report unless there are any questions.
That concludes the report from the Law Director. Uh, moving on to the next report, uh, will be Clerk of Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 25-2021 through 30-2021, and resolution numbers 37-2021 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Moving on to, uh, Item Number Nine, New Business, um, starting with, the first is going to be Resolution Number 1-2022. So we have...
I've read it.
The first reading, so it'll be reading in full, correct?
Uh, and with resolutions, you only need one reading.
Okay.
Resolution Number 01-2022, initiating a rezoning application for 14.9292 acres of land located southeast of the intersection of West Sham Road and Way, and Waycross Road. Whereas the City of Forest Park is the owner of a 14.9292 acre parcel of land located southeast of the intersection of West Sham Road and Waycross Road. Whereas this land is owned R2, One Family Residence Districts, District. And whereas a rezoning application must be attested to by the property owner. And whereas the application initiated by council must be accompanied by a resolution pertaining thereto. And whereas the council wishes to initiate the rezoning of this land from R2, One Family Residence District, to R PUD, Residential Plant Unit Development District. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, that in applicant, Section 1, that an application be initiated to rezon 14.9292 acres of land, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, from R2, One Family Residence, to R PUD Residential Plant, excuse me, residential plant unit development. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
All right, the resolution, uh, resolution has been read in full. Is there any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 01-2022.
It's been moved improperly seconded.
Um, at this time, um, our clerk has read it in full, and so, um, no questions unless anyone has any questions.
Does anyone have, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, uh, let the clerk call the roll on the motion.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yeah. Motion passes seven zero. Uh, next item, Resolution Number 02-2022. The clerk read that resolution in full.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to take this down to read it a little bit. Resolution Number 02-2022, initiating a rezoning application for 12.42462 acres of land located south of Waycross Road near the intersection with Hamilton Avenue. Whereas the City of Forest Park is the owner of a 12.462 acre parcel of land located south of Waycross Road near the intersection of Hamilton Avenue. And whereas this land is owned PB Plan Business District and R1, One Family Residence District. And whereas a rezoning application must be attested to by property, by the property owner. And whereas applications initiated by council must be accompanied by a resolution pertaining thereto. And whereas the council wishes to initiate the rezoning of this land from VP Plan Business and R1, One Family Residence District to IP Industrial Park District. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that an application be initiated to rezon 12.502 acres of land, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, from PB Plan Business to R1, One Family Residence to IP Industrial Park. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and take a, effect upon its passage.
All right, the resolution has been read in full. Is there a motion of Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 02-22. Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, just that this was read in full by our clerk, and I urge adoption.
Is there any further discussion? All right, let the clerk call the roll on the motion.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester. Adams.
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven zero. Next item, Resolution Number 03-2022. Let the clerk read this resolution.
Resolution Number 03-2022, a resolution finding certain municipally-owned property to be surplus property and accepting the proposal for the sale of the, for the sale thereof. Whereas the City of Forest Park owns 15 acres, more or less, of real property located at the southeast corner of West Sham Road and Waycross Road. And whereas the Council of the City of Forest Park has determined that said real estate is not required for municipal purposes and continued ownership would not be profitable to the city. And whereas the council also determined that it is no longer necessary, appropriate, or in the best interest of the city to continue ownership of said real estate. And whereas the city retained a real estate broker in 2020 to market the property for development. And whereas the Forest Park Redevelopment Plan identified attached-for-sale housing as a primary goal for new housing development and the subject property in particular as the location for such housing development. And whereas implementation of the redevelopment plan requires a developer builder with sufficient experience, capacity, and expertise, as well as a willingness to cooperate with the city on a shared vision for the property. And whereas a proposal by Crystal Homes, Inc., to purchase real estate has been reviewed by the council and recommended by the staff as the best proposal to meet the goals and requirements outlined above. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Forest Park to waive the requirement for competitive bidding and authorize the sale of the real estate in accordance to Section 39.02 of, of the Forest Park Code of Ordinances, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the 15 acres of real property located at the southeast corner of, of West Sham Road and Waycross Road, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, with all improvements theron, is hereby declared to be surplus property and of no further use to the City of Forest Park. Section 2, that the proposal of Crystal Homes, Inc., is fair and equitable with the current market value of the property and will implement a major goal and primary objective of the Forest Park Redevelopment Plan. Section 3, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with Chris, Crystal Homes, Inc., for the sale and development of the property as outlined in Exhibit B attached hereto and made a part, and made a part of this resolution, and to take all necessary actions and execute this agreement. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
All right, thank you, Sally. Is there a motion, uh, Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, I move to adopt Resolution Number 03-2022.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, no, this resolution was read in full by our Clerk of Council. I urge adoption.
Uh, let the clerk call the roll on the motion.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester. Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. All right, motion passes seven zero. Uh, next item, uh, Madam Vice Mayor Holt.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Charles H. Johnson to the Stormwater Board of Director and the Environmental Awareness Board of Director for the term expiring 11/30/24.
Second. Well, it's been moved, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
All right, let the clerk call the roll on the motion.
And there can't be a voice vote, but I call the roll.
Oh, can't it be a voice vote? Okay, well, uh, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, next item, uh, Madam Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Diana Herbie to the Economic Development Commission for the term expiring 11/30/24.
Second. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, any discussion?
None, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, and moving on to Item Number F, uh, Madam Vice Mayor Moore.
A motion to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, let it be known by a sound of saying, voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, motion passes. Uh, next item, oh, well, well, uh, looks like that's all, folks, so, is there any more business to come for the body? Any more business come for the body? All right, this council meeting is now adjourned.